Councilmember Bryant, do you mind leading us in a word of prayer?
No, we'd love to. Thank you. Go bow with me. Amen. Father, we just come to you today and just thank you and praise you for all the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We ask you for your guidance and correction each and every day in all that we do, dear Lord, what we do for the work of us of you. Thank you so much for life. Thank you for the city of Odessa. Thank you for this council. Would you say the God direct us tonight and the decisions that are made? In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Councilmember Willis will do the pledges.
Do you join me for the pledges?
To the flag.
To the flag. Nine states and the nation. And to the republic which stands. One nation under God. With liberty, justice, and for.
And the Texas flag, please. Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee. Texas. One state under God.
One.
One and indivisible.
Thank you very much, councilmember. We do have a proclamation tonight. It's National Chiropractic Health Month, and I believe Dr. Ben Kieros is here.
He is.
Yes.
I will go ahead and read the proclamation. It says, "City of Odessa Proclamation. Chiropractors are physician-level healthcare providers who focus on the whole person as part of hands-on, non-drug approach to pain management and health promotion, and have an expertise in prevention, treatment, rehabilitation, and neuromuscular skeletal conditions and injuries. Chiropractors are identified as a part of the essential healthcare workforce, and many have continued to serve their patients and communities in the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. With many Americans working from home, attending school during the pandemic, the incidence of neuromuscular skeletal conditions has grown due to an increase in the sedentary lifestyles, poor posture, and stress. Neuromuscular skeletal conditions are the most commonly reported medical conditions for adults and seniors among them. Low back pain is the single leading cause of disability worldwide, preventing people from participating in daily and recreational activities. Chiropractic care is recognized as one of the safest, non-drug, non-invasive approaches for the treatment of low back pain and other neuromuscular complaints. And non-invasive, non-drug treatment for low back pain and other muscular skeletal conditions, such as spinal manipulation and other chiropractic services, combined with an active, healthy lifestyle, may lessen or eliminate the need for riskier potential addictive treatments. Now therefore, I, David R. Turner, by the virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Odessa, hereby claim October 2020 National Chiropractic Health Month."
Yay. Thank you all very much. It's wonderful. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you for being here. Would you like to say anything?
Well, I just want to say thank you all so much for recognizing chiropractic. You know, I've served this community my entire career, a board of directors here, and I, you know, serve on the hospital board of directors. I feel that, you know, chiropractic is such a conservative way to really address, you know, muscular conditions here in the community, non-invasively without the use of medications and surgical intervention. So I thank you all so much for recognizing chiropractic in the month of October. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to remove item F from the consent agenda.
Item F? Okay.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to remove item F. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item F?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item F, consider the purchase of the construction of a new metal building at Fire Station 5 for $65,545. Chief Ortega. Chief, are you on there?
Was having some problems earlier.
I think I lost everybody.
There he is.
There he is.
Chief Alvarez, you gonna handle it? Chief Alvarez?
While he's working, while he's working through it.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Yeah.
Very good. So what is the question on the, on the, the building?
Well, we're moving on the consent agenda, so we were gonna discuss.
Yes, sir.
My issue with this, I looked over the quote that I received from the contractors, and my opinion with this is that this building is 600 square foot, and it's costing us over $100. It's accommodated, doesn't have, you know, a floor, doesn't have a closet. And therefore, I'm thinking that's a little bit high. I wanted to see if we could put that for bid, again. Surely, we can find a low build considerably less.
Yes, sir. In my understanding, Mr. Spraw's is that Chief Ortega did, did get some different bids, and I think this was the lowest, actually, that we got.
Wasn't the biggest problem that we had a huge amount of concrete, that it's so unlevel at that spot?
That is correct, yes, sir.
People take it said last time the cure, the big cost was associated with the concrete and the drop-off that was there, whatever it was, to make this a level project.
It is in a flood area, and it would require some dirt to be brought in, but that's not that expensive.
Yes, sir. But, but that is the case. We were gonna have to build it up quite a bit because, because that area, I mean, I've seen a, I've seen a dumpster floating around in there, in that area, but yes, he's, he was aware of that. He made sure that the contractors were aware of that because we want to make sure that this thing doesn't flood.
Well, I, I ride out there, I park, I park in that parking lot a lot, and, and I, I understand the situation, but that's a lot of money. And, and in the big scheme of things, we're not talking about that much, but that's a lot of money for a 600-square-foot building.
Yes, sir.
Did, did we have, did we have other bids on there, chief?
Yes, we did.
Could we just get those bids brought in, maybe?
Do we, may I suggest that we, we can, there's not a real urgency for this one? So we can bring it back to the council. We will provide you all the information regarding the bids, the cost breakdown that we provided Mr. Spraw, so you can see where the costs are distributed. There was a significant amount of this cost that was associated with the slab itself in engineering that, so it would not be in the flood zone. So there's a certain amount of dollars that were associated with that. But again, this is not one that is pressing. So we can certainly bring this back and provide the council all of that information and make sure you have as much information as you need to make your decision.
We can do that.
Table it?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion to table it?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. It is now tabled. Now we move to other council action. Consider the purchase of traffic signal equipment for $230,480. Mr. Feldman or Mr. Kerr?
Good evening, council. And I wanted to update you on this agenda item. This is for the purchase of 17 traffic signal cabinets. Of those 17, 14 will be installed out at various locations throughout the city, and three I will hold back in case of emergencies and accidents. We plan to buy this equipment utilizing the Byboard State Contract. This is a budgeted purchases. And I have been in contact with Randy Hamm. Of the 14 signal cabinets that are gonna be replaced out in the field, two of these locations have been wrapped, and he told me after the new signal cabinets get installed, let him know, and he will get those rewrapped. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Any other questions, Mr. Feldman?
How did you, I'm sorry. How did you say that these were being replaced due to age?
Yeah, I mean, several of these locations, these signal cabinets are more than 25 years old. So they've, they've served their useful.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just to follow up and make, you and Randy coordinate the recovering of those. I think those look, look really nice with that art there. And so just to make sure we don't drop, you know, the ball, make sure you guys continue to communicate. I'd appreciate it.
Any other comments?
I move for approval.
Second. We have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Feldman. Item two, consider the purchase of holiday decorations for $135,177.
Hey, good evening. How are y'all?
Nice to meet you.
All right.
Well, this is the $135,177 worth of holiday decorations for Arnett Marketing. This is a Byboard purchase, but it is the remaining 50% that we will utilize to finish off the big display purchase that we're gonna have for Starlight Village, along with the two big trees that are made out of spheres that go on either side of the entrance to the convention center. We've paid 50% down. This would be the final 50% of her payment. And if it's not approved, I don't know what I'm gonna do. I'll be like washing her car and getting another job working for. But we're, we're really excited. I've, I've seen the, the trees have already arrived, and it is gonna really be something for the front of the convention center. They're really gonna, and they'll complement the one tree that, that is at the Marriott. It's the very same tree, just much larger. And that'll be on either side of the front door. And then I've seen the manufacturing of the crystals, the crystal tunnel that is gonna be at the drive-through, and it's gonna be really a crowd pleaser, really dazzle people, I think, for this year. I'm very excited about it.
Great. Any questions from council?
Steve, if I vote against this, will you tell me when the car wash is?
Most definitely, and Santa Claus won't come see ya.
All right. Anything else from council?
Steve, when is it? What's the first night of the Starlight Village? When's it open?
We will have a virtual ceremony that will be December the 3rd, and that's when we will count the tree lighting down, and the tree will be lit, and Starlight Village will open on December the 3rd, and that's a Thursday after Thanksgiving, and it will run through January the 1st.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, sure.
What time does the virtual lighting start, Steve?
Right now, it's scheduled right after the news on Channel 9, and right now, we're looking at 6:30 to 7:00.
Okay.
We'll have full commercials. I've got a meeting set up with Channel 9. They are our new media partner. We've got some great creative ideas that have come from Channel 9, and I'm excited to be with them this year. Now, I'm really impressed with how they want to get the word out and be a real good media partner.
Great. Any other questions for Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Steve.
Sure.
We do have a citizen who would like to speak. Jeff Russell. If you would just give us your address, and then you've got three minutes to speak.
Sure. Jeff Russell, 1703 Red Bud. Two, two questions that I had about this was, one, I was wondering if you could share the breakdown between the cost, between the stuff between the convention center and the cost that's going at Starlight Village. And part of the question kind of related to that in that, as I understand, the city actually leases that, the convention center, to the Marriott operator, and so I'm wondering why we're spending tax dollars on a leased facility that I understand we get no lease payments out of. So those, those are my two questions and comments.
Steve, you wanna handle that?
Yes. The, the two big trees that the city is supplying, those are funded from hot funds. Those are actually hotel motel funds that, they're not taxpayers' dollars in property tax, but they are hot funds tax. And the trees were $80,000, and then the remainder of that will go towards the big display. It'll be on display at Starlight Village. So that's, the, of this $135, you're talking about 55 and 40. I mean, they'll take a few dollars in the split. So $40,000 of the $135 will go for the final payment to the two trees. Then the remainder will be for the down payment remaining left on the big drive-through tunnel, crystal tunnel for Starlight Village. And like I said, the source of funds is hot funds that were allocated on an annual basis. The, I'm sorry, the remainder of your question?
Yeah, the, the remainder of the question had to do with the fact that we continue to use, whether it's hotel motel tax or any other tax, it's still taxpayer money in one way or another. We can, we continue to funnel money into things like the convention center, which is, as my understanding is, that's leased a private company. I don't see us putting up Christmas trees at Mr. Bushman's properties or anything else. So I'm, I'm a little concerned that we continue to pump money into the Marriott and the convention center when we're getting no lease revenue back to the city out of those facilities.
Michael, you have a feeling with this one?
Yeah, Steve, I can, I can certainly, I, I think we see this as, we do likes in downtown as it is now. This is an enhancement to the Christmas decorations that we do in downtown. This will just be associated next to the property that the city does own, which is the conference center.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Now, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under resolution, consider accepting a donation from Chevron and appropriating the funds for Odessa Fire Rescue. Chief Alvarez?
Getting new mayor, council. We did receive a donation from Chevron. This is actually not their first donation. They have donated to us in the past. This donation is for the amount of $10,000, and we would like to be able to use these funds to, you know, to, to give it back to our personnel in some form or the other. We, you know, usually in the holidays, we provide them a little, and, and we do buy some equipment with that, maybe just a token of appreciations for them. But I did, I did reach out to Mrs. Kaylee Dunn from Chevron, the one that sent the donation, and they, unfortunately, they were unable to join us this evening, but I did convey my appreciation for the support that they have always shown to us, and we were very thankful for that.
Great. Any questions from council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Item four, consider allocating CARES coronavirus relief funds and the establishment of a partnership between the city of Odessa Medical Center Health Systems and Odessa Regional Medical Center for the operating and administration of community-wide COVID-19 testing and flu shot vaccinations. Mr. Marrero?
Yes, sir, mayor. Thank you. As you recall from our conversation last week, we had both Dr. Sarah Van and Russell Tippin of MCH, and Dr. Sarah Van, of course, is with Odessa Regional. But we talked at length about this particular program and the service that it could provide the citizens of Hector County. As you know, the city currently operates a COVID testing program, and we are seeing increasing numbers of not only people seeking tests, and these are people who typically would not have the resources to have a test. We're seeing those people coming in, more and more of them each week. And then we're also seeing a higher positivity rate. Last week, our positivity was about 37% of those we tested last week. Several weeks ago, the coronavirus task force discussed the possibility of partnering with ORMC and MCH for the provision of COVID testing and flu vaccinations to anybody within Hector County and provide greater access. That is to say, that clinics would be available to, to provide those tests and vaccines to, again, anybody with, who resides in Hector County, who is seeking a test and doesn't have the resources, give them the ability to get a test seven days a week, so they're not necessarily just having to wait for the city once a week testing. But again, this would be a partnership between the three entities. The cost of the COVID test would be approximately $150 for the COVID test and $50 for the flu shot. Both hospitals have indicated that this is pretty close to their cost. They are both available, I think, on the line if you have any questions for either one of the two gentlemen. But this could serve as a very valuable resource for our residents who, who think they may be exposed to COVID or feel like they need a test, and certainly providing flu shots will help the hospitals in keeping a number of patients who would typically come in for flu issues down by, by making sure that the community is vaccinated for the flu.
Are there any questions from council?
We might just, we might just, Mr. Tippin, tell everybody that's new on the line where those clinics are, where this would be offered.
Yes, ma'am. This is Russell Tippin. Good evening, council. Thank you for your time this evening. I hope you're staying warm. Medical Center, along with Odessa Regional, we have set up three clinics. I'll talk about the Medical Center, then I'll let Dr. Sarah Van talk about Odessa Regional. We have, we are clipping and setting up our 42nd Street Clinic, which is located right by Permian High School, and also our West County Clinic over on the west side. And those clinics are Monday through Sunday, seven days a week. Nine o'clock till, some of them stay open till nine, some of them stay open till 8:30. But it is seven days a week. And when I visited with the council last time, we are also working to set up two remote, two remote testing sites during, like, on a weekend. And I think Dr. Sarah Van also talked about they're, they have a mobile unit, so we can take it into, especially on the west side, for members of the county and the city that cannot afford to drive or can't get a ride. We want to take it into those neighborhoods and make it available. And so we look forward to doing that in partnership with the city of Odessa. And then I'll yield my time back over to Dr. Sarah Van and let him talk about Odessa Regional.
Thank you, Russell. Thank you, city council, for having us on. I think this is a great opportunity for us to work together and come up with a solution that encourages our citizens to get their flu shot and come in for COVID testing if they need it. As you guys know, our positivity rate is well over 20% at this point, and our hospitalization rate is getting pretty close to 15% of operational beds being occupied by COVID-19 cases. That does put quite a bit of stress on the system. I think it is in everybody's best interest if we can get control of this disease and also prevent a secondary respiratory disease like the influenza come up, which is the reason for this initiative. Again, the Odessa Regional Medical Center's site will be at the Community Health Center on the west campus, which is at Fifth and Muskingham. That's open working hours Monday through Friday, usually around 8:30 to 4:30. But with the mobile van, we can probably extend this service out to places out in west Odessa that might not have easy access to coming in for getting this test. So we can do that probably five days a week easily if we need it to. The total cost of this per patient that walks in could be up to $200 because it's $150 for the COVID test and $50 for the flu shot. Obviously, not everybody will need the flu shot. So if we can, if we can touch, you know, 5,000 to 10,000 lives between now and the end of the year, that's, that's that many fewer cases in our community that we can prevent from seeking hospitalization and overwhelming the healthcare system. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Russell or Dr. Sarah Van?
I do. Gentlemen, how soon, if this is approved tonight, how soon do you think you'll be able to start?
In the next four days.
Yes, this is Russell. We'll be, we'll be ready to go November 1st.
Okay.
Counsel, I will let you know that I have visited with the legal department, and they are currently drafting the agreement that would have to be executed. So this item will also give me the authority to execute any documents that are associated with this program. The other thing I failed to mention is that we are looking at setting aside $1 million in order to get the program done. That would take us through the end of the year.
And Michael, just to clarify for the people that may be listening, please explain where this million will come from.
Great question. So earlier this year, the city was notified that it received about $6.6 million in coronavirus relief funds directly from the state. Those were pass-through dollars that were part of the larger CARES funding that was passed by Congress early this year. The allocation was based on our population. The council has utilized its dollars so far for a variety of different programs, including Small Business Assistance Program, the purchase of medical equipment for firefighters specifically, and PPE purchases for the organization, as well as its current testing program that we're doing today, I mean, that we're currently doing. And so the grant requires that 75% of the dollars be used on medical-related type activities. And currently, we have about $3.7 million of the 75% available. So the, the $1 million would come from that portion of it. The remainder of the money would be used for reimbursement of costs associated for public safety.
And we have to spend that money by the end of the year, correct?
That, that is the deadline, mayor. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, on behalf of the city, how wonderful it is to have two hospitals that work so hard together, because that really has benefited our community during this whole COVID pandemic. So thank, thank Russell and to Dr. Sarah Van and Stacy over at ORMC. Is there any other comments?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, we had also kind of talked about if needed, and if you see the need, that that mobile unit could also maybe be utilized on the south side as well, you know. So wanted to just make a point of that.
Any other questions?
I just, I just want to reiterate that I think it is, it's truly a blessing that, that we've been given this money and that the city is able to allocate through the grant programs and Mills on Wheels and the 16 testings that we will have done, and then now adding this. This, this is really a lot of great public service for our community.
I agree, Peggy.
Yep, I agree, Peggy.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I move for approval. I'm sorry, Russell. I didn't mean to interrupt. I was trying to approve for you.
I just had one, one question for, if I may, mayor?
Sure.
First of all, I'd like to echo your, your council's thoughts. This is a huge deal for this community, so thank you all for being the leaders in that. And secondly, Mike, the million dollars, are we gonna, are we gonna stop at a million? What happens if we go over that? Are we gonna cap it at a million dollars worth of tests?
So, the council, you, we discussed last week a million dollars, and the contract is currently being drafted to not exceed a million dollars. Russell, I think I would say that if it gets it close to that, we can bring it back to the council, unless the council would like to maybe authorize additional dollars at this point.
I'd suggest let's wait and see the results, and we can always come back and revisit it.
I agree.
I agree.
Any other comments?
Will, will the results of these be given to the county to be used in their tabulations?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Okay. Good.
For, for the council, my, just by anticipation, to get reports from above hospitals, so we can provide you the information as to how many clients they're seeing and what positivity rates that we're seeing as well.
Great. Great.
I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under Mr. Lincoln.
Thank you.
Appointment to boards.
Thank you, council, for the appointment.
Thank you, council, for the appointment of boards. The Board of Survey, Deanna Cosper. For the Traffic Advisory Committee, Lori White. For the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Kyle Newton. And for the Odessa Housing Finance Corporation, Councilmember Spraws is interested in serving in the vacant position as represented by a council member.
And I'd also like to add, Steve Turner to the golf committee. I will entertain a motion.
I saw Connie Kuntz on. Was there something that, appointment on that?
That's gonna be at the next council meeting.
You've got it.
Hey, guys, but we did, can I speak?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, I spoke to David earlier. We're wanting to revise our bylaws. And so David said he would, we could revisit our appointments at the next council meeting possible.
Okay, that's no problem.
No problem.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Under citizens' comments or on non-agenda items, Mark Trotter would like to speak. And Mr. Trotter, I'll give you three minutes. Floor is yours. Mark, you may be muted.
It must have muted by itself. Okay. Thank y'all so much for having me today. I visited you guys back on the 28th at the city meeting up over at the Marriott. And I brought up the discussion about how small businesses were gonna get funding to help them keep open through this pandemic that we've been shut down. We've received no benefits out of this so far. The PPP had nothing to do with the small business, other than keeping the employees on the payroll. And that was only for two months. Well, that ran out. I'm looking at my statistics right here on my, my own place of business. And we ran out in July. We went through April and July. That was my two months that I had a PPP loan through the SBA. Well, here we are, six, almost, what, five months later, and we've received nothing to help us keep the lights on, keep the, keep the rent going, keep the, you know, the utilities on. I have yet not heard anything from not the city nor the government about how you're gonna help us stay afloat. I'm at my ends rope right now, where I'm gonna start laying off people by the first of the month because I am out of my savings. And when I, when I talked to y'all then, nobody had any clue of what we could do. They had no clue of where we could go. I know I talked to Mayor Turner the day after that meeting. And he told me that we could get on the, the city planning for city help. And I filled out that application on the 17th. Two weeks later, I was told I was not eligible for those funds. And Mr. Michael Marrero, I talked to him, and he said, no, if you receive PPP, then you are ineligible for any help. Now, the PPP has nothing to do with small businesses keeping their doors open. Nothing. So if somebody on the council could answer me the question of why they think that PPP has anything to do with my company to keep the doors open, I would love to hear it.
On a non-agenda item, Mr. Trotter, we can't actually speak. But I can have them put something on there so we could at the next meeting discuss it. But right now, if it's not on the agenda, we can't actually speak to it. So I will ask Norma to look at putting that on there. And we can get it on the next one, and then we can talk in public about it.
Okay, that's fine. I, I wish we would have done that on the 28th. That way, we wouldn't have gone this far. This is four months later already.
Okay, I'll get Norman, get that, put that on there.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Item seven, in a recess for an executive session is authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. The city council may adjourn into executive sessions to consider pending or contemplated litigation and reconvene an open session for possible action. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes, and we will now go into executive session.
So we need to sign on the other one, right?
Yes.
Need to what?
We need to leave this one and sign on to the other one, right?
Okay.
Did we get everybody back? Yeah, there's Mara. Okay, we are, it's 7:15. We are now out of executive session. I need a motion to come out.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's 7:15. We are now out of executive session. No action was taken during the executive session. I will entertain a motion to dismiss.
Second. Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all. All right, have a good night.
Good night.
Good evening.
Good night.